Good evening. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 5th. The American College of Health and Sciences Board of Education's Board of Education. And that's it. We're all on the rise with the movement which is three and a half days.
I'm Mr. Wieland. I'm here to help you for what you say. My mission, how they're got, we're just for, but we're just in justice for all.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Thank you very much to our great team who always make sure that you look great and are all together on our traveling road show while we are not yet complete with our renovations or a missing ceiling or whatever, which I am okay with because we have other projects that are in progress. So happy to see you all here this evening. Will the quick please call the board?
Thank you, Governor.
President.
Mr. Crim.
Present.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Dr. Navarres Martinez.
Present.
Mr. Novisky.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Permission.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Or.
Thank you. Dr. Navarres Martinez, will you please read the distribution statement, please?
Permission statement of the Lansing School District is to provide a high-quality education and a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to purposeful and fulfilling lives.
Thank you. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing, uh, Ms. Moore.
Yeah, because then I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I'm wondering if we could add the discussion about our board norms to the agenda? Where do I go?
We could add a discussion under the, under discussions. Okay. Discussion item A for yours.
And. Do you want to vote on them tonight? Is that okay for the discussion as well?
We have the board. Do you want to make a motion? Okay, thank you. Sure thing. If any board member needs a copy of the norms, that would pass out of the truth, but it adds on my order day. That's the patch copy. Before we get started, and I do my copies, before we get started, and I don't want to steal the thunder from the superintendent, um, but I have to start out by saying that I am pissed that we are convening as board after another act of violence of a school shooting. And I was originally going to ask my colleagues if we should do a number of sirens, but I think a number of sirens is futile. And I don't want us to do a number of sirens because I'm hungry right. And I'm pissed. It's a, carry on. Next, we are on to, um, public comment on the items. Seeing none? Presentations. Okay. Have to see Wheeler. On that note, how are things going in the Lansing School District?
Hello. Thank you for having me here. This is a trip. Yes, high dogs. In this, uh, new location, so some new things to be. So thank you for having me here. I'm here to talk to you tonight about my monthly health and wellness report. And there it is. As we begin the new school year, we have updated our COVID protocol to closely align with the CDC and Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, or MBHHS guidelines. This protocol would also be appropriate for all respiratory illnesses. People who have tested positive for COVID must now remain at home and away from others until they are both fever-free without fever-reducing medication and symptoms are getting better for at least 24 hours. They then must mask for five days upon each other work or school. These will be the same guidelines for staff or students. For those who are in close contact, we ask that they monitor for symptoms for five days. They wear a well-fitting medical-grade mask for five days. And they take a COVID rapid antigen test, or a PCR, on days three to five and avoid contact with vulnerable people. We are continuing to provide rapid testing at school for students and staff, and we also provide at-home tests for students and staff. In August, our staff COVID cases rose to 19, fairly distributed across the district. This was quite expected as we returned to school and we gathered hundreds of people from different households and different locations together. Our student cases rose to 30 between August 1st and August 31st. And a little preview or pre-warn, we do expect we'll see quite a jump in September, which was due to the resumption of school and a COVID rise across the area in general. On a brighter note, the Student Development Program has released the fall schedule with our standard sessions of academic tutoring, sports-specific skills and drills, speed, strength and agility, and esports. Next week, we will see the return of our Gardner Soccer Club for soccer training, tutoring, and a good hot dinner. New programs this fall include photography, garden-to-table nutrition, and the mobile barber now providing haircuts and styling every Monday for students within the program. The program closed out the summer session with about 1,300 participants each month. Program favorites continue to be basketball, soccer, strength and conditioning, and always the good hot meal. I'm very happy to let you know that we have been awarded the Health Resource Advocate Grant, or the HRA Grant, again for the 2024-25 school year. This large grant supports our medical assistant program, Student Development Program, health and wellness trainers, health educators, and health advocates all across the district. In 2024-25, the Student Development Program will continue to grow and expand. Over the summer, we partnered with Special Olympics and will have all of the trainers certified as Special Olympics coaches by the end of the month. We hope to provide a more inclusive welcoming program for all of the students in the district. The Agoji Leadership Program with former basketball coach Mike Garland is returning with innovative designs applying basketball and team skills to help students develop academically, socially, and behaviorally. Our greenhouse has arrived and is ready to be built and installed at the Field House, actually on the Field House grounds. The greenhouse will provide a unique garden-to-table nutrition program in partnership with the Northwest Initiative and our AmeriCorps service workers. Our MSU student tutors will return at the end of the month with their focus on academic achievement, developing study skills, and credit recovery. The esports program has continued to expand due to its popularity. We're now offering sessions Monday through Thursday, and they are always full. The Gardner Soccer Club returns beginning next week with Gardner teacher, coaches Will Lovett and Paul Chatfield. This year, we'll continue to offer the Care Closet with BIPOC-specific health and personal care products. The closet will be open for orders on September 30th. We will accept orders for the first week of each month and then fill and distribute those orders the following three weeks. All students are welcome to place an order with the Care Closet. We are working closely with our district staff and community partners such as AmeriCorps, Board of Modern Light, Michigan State University College of Nursing, Ingham County Health Department, just to name a few. On October 23rd, we'll offer an immunization program in partnership with the Ingham County Health Department to ensure the achievement of our 90% immunization rate requirement. The Office of School Culture looks forward to the 24-25 school year with many exciting programs and services intentionally designed to support our school community in reaching their academic, social, health, and wellness goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Wheeler this evening?
President.
Sure thing. Dr. Arias.
Thank you. You're talking about your grant. Um, how much, how is the amount of money in the grant from 2024-25?
Uh, the grant will be just about 1.5 million. So it's a large grant.
1.5 million?
Yes.
Great. And this grant is going to be used, um, what kind of that, what kind of the programs or what kind of the, for the students?
Yes. This grant is used for the medical assistant program, for the health and wellness trainers and the student development program, and for health educators and advocates throughout the district. So all of the grant is designed to push out health and wellness initiatives to all of the students in the district.
And does it go inside of the schools and then what and how way?
Yes. So, um, medical assistants are assigned to every building, every school in the district. The after-school programs are supported with the Student Development Program with the health and wellness trainers there.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President.
Sure thing, Mr. Lopez.
Okay. Um, I guess this is a question for both you and our superintendent. This program is great to begin with, okay? Um, is the 1.5 the only funding for this program? Do you use it as the seat money for the program or, uh, superintendent?
Sure. First of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. It's a great question. So the way that this had originally gone is this was money that was gone, uh, put through the ISD, and this is the first year that we're actually kind of running the whole show, as it were. Um, this is in addition to all sorts of other health and wellness dollars that we use from our general funds, from our 31A funds. But what's really nice is that we are now the grantee for, from the state for this entire package. And so it's allowed us to keep our programs like medical assistants and health educators. But we would still have those regardless of the grant for things like the Student Development Center. So, you know, we have school nurses, we have Dr. Wheeler, we have the entire Office of School Culture, that stuff that we're using general funds for or other grant money. This is particularly focused on the medical assistance. And Sue can go into more detail if you want about some of the requirements, things like we have to still have a testing program, things like that. And that allows us to continue to get this grant. We hope the state in its beneficence wants to do it again next year. We don't know, but certainly we're really happy to have it for 24-25.
Okay. Well, that's great. Um, my point is that, um, if we don't have this grant, you know, are we prepared to, to fund?
Yeah.
The individuals and programs that this grant is covering? Because traditionally or years past, we'd get a grant for three years and then the program was done and, and kids were left hanging, you know, because there was no program.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a, it's a great question. We would have to understand what our budget would look like at the end of the year, if and when the, but this grant came or not. But the way that the grant is funded, these are all kind of one-year things, and we would certainly reevaluate it at the end. But rest assured, the district itself will continue to have a very robust nurse program, medical assistant program, health program. The exact dollars, if the grant goes away, what does that mean? We'll have X amount versus X minus one. I, I just can't say at this point.
And one other thing this grant is allowing us to do is be very directed and intentional with developing community partners.
Yeah.
So some of this, uh, the support for programs, we hope to continue with community partners. And, you know, one example of that would be this garden-to-table nutrition program. That's a partnership with Northwest Initiative and AmeriCorps. So that will be supported, just as one small example. But we do share your concern and we recognize the need to do that, to continue to explore funding sources, community partners, uh, because, you know, as the superintendent points out, we are so committed to health and wellness and demonstrate that all the time.
Yeah. I, I think the, uh, to have this program embedded in our district, you know, make it part of our regular services, so to speak, is what we want to see. And thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Madam President.
Dr. Arias.
Thank you. Is this, um, grant also support mental health?
Uh, this is actually separate from the many mental health grants that we have that actually, moving forward, the Office of School Culture is going to be bringing that report to as well. So we can sort of shine light on all of those supportive services and grants that come through the Office for School Culture. Yeah.
Thank you. I, we will have a presentation about the mental health too.
Yes. That will, that will be coming to you in the first week of October.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions this evening? All right. Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is a report from Superintendent. Mr. Shuldena.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and good evening again. It's a pleasure to be here again. Now, I think this is number four of the board meetings to not be in the confines of our own offices. I share, uh, the president's comments that I'd rather us focus on the schools than on our office, but a lot of this has to do with waiting for insurance. Uh, when you have a flood, if you know in your home or in your office, you've got to make sure that, uh, your insurance is going to pay for it before you start all the construction. So, uh, our hope is certainly to be back in our offices one day, but I think it's really powerful and important for us to have our board meetings within the schools. And we're lucky enough that all of our three big high schools have these kind of beautiful spaces that we can be in. So, uh, thank you to Eastern for hosting us. It is always a pleasure to be here, and, uh, I'm happy that we can have this evening together. Uh, because you heard from Dr. Wheeler, I do want to point out, as she mentioned, one of the things that's going to be happening moving forward is that having Sue present to the board grew out of the COVID crisis. There were a lot of rules and regulations and also things that we really needed to share with the community. Now, as COVID has abated some, is certainly not gone, as we know from the data, um, we want to now use these monthly times for the entire Office of School Culture to really be able to not only inform the board, but to inform the community around things that are happening. Uh, last night, I had the privilege of being with a wonderful community organization. And, you know, one of the things that they were talking to me about is they know great things are happening in Lansing, but not everybody knows about it. And I think that the more that we can share and the more transparent we are as a district, uh, the more that I think the community can feel really comfortable with the work we do. Now, I know not a lot of people come to our board meetings, and I know not a lot of people are watching us on YouTube or whatever it is that we stream on, but I certainly do know that we can take these videos and we can push those out through social media and through email, and we really appreciate that. So, you know, Sue's been doing a great job, and, uh, the entire Office of School Culture, under the direction of Executive Director Cordelia Black, has a panoply of programs. We have Director of Mental Health, we have the Director of the Office of School Culture. There's a lot of programs that are happening, and we really want to share with that. That being said, this is the first time that we've been able to talk since the kind of real start of school, as it were. Um, you know, the school started well, and then it got really hot. Uh, I am the first one to admit that it was pretty brutal in a lot of the classrooms. I spent Monday and Tuesday in all of, as many of the air, un-air-conditioned classrooms that I could. I spent most of my days there. And it just highlights the fact that this district as a whole has a billion dollars worth of deferred maintenance. And, you know, I don't want to plead poverty. We are going to fix it. We are going to bring air conditioning to every classroom, but there's a lot of classrooms to do that. But I will point out, and this is an important note, is that when we go for a millage, when we ask for money from the community, one mil here does not equal one mil somewhere else. And we have to be really thoughtful about the large needs that our buildings have. And this is no fault of our children, no fault of our wonderful staff, no fault of our wonderful families, and to be really thoughtful about how best we can use our space and what we need to do to get the monies so that all of our folks, our staff, our students, our families are in, uh, kind of comfortable confines so that they can learn. It is difficult to learn in 90-degree weather. And I appreciate, sometimes people will come to me and say, "Well, Ben, when my day, I suffered." Yeah. Well, the prime word is "suffered." We don't want that. And so as long as folks understand that this is something that we need to work on and we need to mitigate and we need to do it as quickly as possible. The good news, and I said this in the superintendent's newsletter last week, two weeks ago, is that we now have a 60%-ish of our classrooms and schools, uh, or the number of students under air conditioning, which is great, but that still leaves quite a bit. Our hope is by the end of this year, so work that's going to be doing this year and the summer, we'll have about 75% of the district finished. And then in the next year or two, we hope to be at 100 or very, very close to that. I know that that is no solace to folks that had to deal with it while it was hot this, uh, this year, but please know that we are working diligently on that. And the other good work that I can mention is that a lot of the custodial and facilities work that's being done, just as maintenance as upkeep, is going to allow us to really have good things going for years to come. One of the problems with deferred maintenance is not only do you have buildings that, let's say, don't have air conditioning, but you have buildings that might not have been maintained well, and then just the other systems aren't working that well either. So we are working on it, but please know, I understand that it was a difficult time. And then, you know, we also then had power outages, uh, with, thank goodness for both BWL and consumers for getting our schools back in working order by the time that school started. But please, um, families, please know that if your child is, you know, not comfortable in school because of the air one way or the other, please just let your principal know, you know, you certainly have the right, uh, to, to have your child not, not be there during, uh, kind of extreme heat, even if it's just because you're worried about walking home because it's so hot or things like that. Um, we are here to, to help you and support you. That's why we have the great Dr. Wheeler for our health and wellness, as well as the entire board, uh, the entire Department of Office of School Culture. The last thing I'll say, and this is just happens to be about today, uh, today, the Greater Lansing era, area was graced with two, I would call them, education dignitaries. Uh, the first one is the Secretary of Education, um, was here in East Lansing, talking to teachers as well as, uh, other educators. And it was really a wonderful highlight of the work that's being done around teacher prep and teacher support and grants to get folks their teaching licenses. Yesterday, I was with the Department of Education, uh, talking about the good work that's being done in mid-Michigan. And it was really powerful when we went around the room and we were asked, you know, what can Lansing say? What are some of the big wins lately? And, you know, I was able to speak for like forever because there would be so many wonderful, positive things. And, you know, the moment I said that the graduation rate was up 23% in three years, the attendance rate was up by 14%, and, uh, enrollment was up for the first time in 30 years. We've created a four-year CTE high school. We have universal pre-K. We have a newcomer center. The looks around that room was both awe, somewhat disbelief, but pride. Um, Lansing is a special place that I think has been maligned way too often around the state. And when we were able to share that information with the, the dignitaries, it was really, really powerful. And the last person and organization I want to shout out, especially with having our, uh, local teachers' union president here, uh, the great Chuck Alberts, uh, we were able to have the president of the NEA, um, one of the two huge teacher union, educator unions, uh, in the country, come to our schools, not just to say hi, but, uh, she, Ms. Pringle, uh, read to our children. She interacted with our children. She talked to our staff. She worked with our staff. And it was so wonderful to see a true educator who cares deeply about workers' rights and cares deeply about, uh, labor, but also, in addition to that, care so deeply about children. And so I really want to commend the NEA for choosing the Lansing School District to spend, uh, I don't know, a couple of hours with us, with our children, and really showing how labor and management can work together for the betterment of children. It was, it was so apparent that the president of NEA is a true educator, just the way that she read to the kids, the way she held the book. Uh, and we were joking that, you know, in my former life as a principal, I would have graded that lesson very, very high. And it was just a, a great thing when you have true leaders of the field be with our children in a positive and respectful way. And so I want to thank the NEA. I want to thank the Department of Education for being in the Greater Lansing area, to being with us, and to highlighting the great work. Is there a lot of work to, yet to be done? Absolutely. Have we made great progress? Yes. And so I hope that all the people who are watching this now, or will watch it later or in the audience, that please know that the way that we continue to be better is to open our doors, to listen, to hear from you. So please, as the school starts, what else do we need to do? But also, it would be nice to hear what's going well. Because if we know what's going well, we can reinvigorate those things and also learn about what else is, uh, that we need to do. So, you know, to the board, thank you for allowing us to do all of this work. Um, and it is really being recognized nationally, uh, by some real, real leaders in the field. So, um, with that, I will say, uh, thank you. And, uh, you know, we will start to give updates in the next couple of weeks around busing, around enrollment, uh, just like we've always done. But for this first kind of like opening salvo, I want to make sure that we just say thank you and to highlight the great work of the district. Madam President, it's all yours.
So much. Any questions for the superintendent this evening?
Madam President.
Yes. Uh, Dr. Navarres Martinez.
A quick question about, um, the heat. Were we doing anything to alleviate that for our teachers and our students? And what was that?
Sure. So, you know, a lot of the stuff is school-based. You know, there were fans, there's waters. I think some schools even had popsicles. You know, all of these things that, you know, schools should be doing and should always have been doing. Uh, you know, when I look over to my left, you know, Sergio was a principal in this district for many years. Jessica, who sadly is a little under the weather, was a principal for many years. You know, these are the same buildings that we've always been in, and we're trying to use the same things. But the good news is more schools have air conditioning than have ever before, but those that don't, it's, you know, we also have some schools that have some and partial air conditioning. So one of the things that some of the schools will do is move folks around. Um, as you notice, you know, certain, uh, wings of the building become hotter in the afternoon because of the way that the sun works, so they can move them there. And the good news is like a place like Sexton, you know, the entire cafeteria is air-conditioned and part of the annex is air-conditioned. We don't have students on the fourth floor anymore. We've been moving kids around. So even in buildings that, let's say, aren't fully air-conditioned, we're able to put those kids. But the, the other important news is we do have our medical assistants and our nurses and our health. So if anybody is ever, you know, feeling flush or feeling overheated, uh, we're able to do that. So it wasn't great, I'll be the first one to admit, but there's a lot of contingency plans that go on throughout the day in every school, even with air conditioning. Because even with air conditioning, kids will go outside or they'll walk in or walk out, and they can feel over, overheated as well.
Did I hear additional questions being asked this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to move us forward in our agenda to our committee reports. Our first committee report this evening is our promise report. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. A short report today. Um, yesterday, the executive board met of the promise. Among the items we discussed or looked at was the finance. The audit has been completed, and we're going to see that at our upcoming meeting in been completed, and we're going to see that at our upcoming meeting in two weeks. We also discussed the work of Promise and the school district. We talked about ways that the Promise is a support system to the district. And so there's a real tight closeness between the district and Promise. Then we looked at ways that we could, that the Promise could continue supporting that. And one thing that was mentioned was that there's a lot of things happening in the district, so Promise needs to know what is going on so that they can know where the support is needed. So we talked about that for a little while. And we also reviewed the board membership, looking at vacancies and how to fill those vacancies, and who would be the most appropriate folks generically to fill those vacancies. And one thing that we talked about is that we're looking forward to our superintendent's visit to one of our board meetings so that you can share all the good news with the Promise, and then the Promise can support the district where requested and where possible. So that was exciting. So those are the four points that I just wanted to share with you. It was not a regular meeting. So if you have any questions, but that's what we did yesterday.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Lopez?
Madam Chair.
Oh, sure thing. Ms. Nowitzki.
Yeah, I'm curious if there's any indication yet with funding available now to students going to community college and district, how that might change the awards from the Promise since that piece would be covered with state funding, or it's too early to know yet.
Yeah, we have discussed that, and Justin is very aware of those additional funds. So the thing is to, how do we continue to support our students? And how can we better use our funds if those funds are there as well? So maybe we look at supporting students with books, materials, maybe computer, you know, personal computer, other things. So that's been a discussion that's been ongoing since last year or year before when this was coming up. So I think at the end, it's better for our students. It's much support than they need it.
Thank you. Chairman Williams.
Is there any way that while students aren't going to Promise schools, if they are Lansing students, that maybe the Promise could possibly give them a computer or give them a stipend for books when they go off to their respective college because they are a Lansing school graduate? Is that something we can look at possibly?
I think it could be. I think we take it on a case-by-case basis, and I think that staff at Promise is willing to consider and see how it fits into the program.
Yeah, any opportunity to explore non-tuition-related access to funding, but towards education materials? That would be interesting if the Promise has the capacity to do that. I know there might be some regulations because of the way it's zoned and technically the way you capture the dollars. There might be something that says that those dollars have to go strictly to tuition, but that would be interesting as the local community colleges become tuition-free for the residents. If there's going to be any offsets and savings that could be used elsewhere, that would be interesting. Just add it to the list. It's okay, Mr. Lopez.
There are other sources of funds, too.
Yeah.
And I think that that's why the staff at the Promise can guide, if not from specific Promise, but can guide the person. So, yep.
Thank you. Great question, Ms. Williams. Any additional questions this evening? All right, scene nine. We are going to go to our next committee report, which is our Personnel Committee. Mr. Nowitzki.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met on Friday, August 23rd. Trustees Lopez, Moore, and I were present, along with our Chief Operating Officer Slade and HR Director Ross. Staff provided some reports on the following topics. First was recruitment and hiring, as well to get to in the full report of staff changes. There are some teaching vacancies to start the school year, but that number of vacancies is far fewer than in recent years, so that's very encouraging. It was reported that several employees are enrolling in the Grow Your Own program through Central Michigan to obtain initial or additional degrees and certifications. And there were some ideas shared about adding links to the district website for positions available through contractors rather than the district directly, so people could easily find out how to apply for those, things like food service and bus drivers, custodians. And for, now that we're into the school year, providing tools for building principals to promote open positions through school-based communications like newsletters and family teacher organizations, particularly for assistant positions and things like that that are open where families might be interested. And there were a few questions about specific position postings. Next, we looked at staff orientation, training, and retention. There was an overview given on the August new hire orientation sessions, which were structured a little differently this year, and the all-staff training that was provided, along with some discussion about the feedback that was received from staff after those sessions. The committee requested that the staff feedback from the orientation be shared with the committee for additional analysis in future meetings. There was some discussion about a gap in orientation and training for some staff members that are in unique positions over different buildings or specific roles that don't really fit into traditional categories, and HR leaders are kind of aware of that and addressing that for the future. And there was an idea shared about finding a way to create a role for a, some sort of school ambassador of sorts, where an employee would be designated to welcome and support new hires in each school, kind of from a cultural onboarding standpoint. So that was an interesting thought. Next, we looked at district-level grievances. There was information provided on the number of grievances that reached the district level for administrator involvement. There's only one grievance from the previous school year still in process, so that was good to hear, and current grievances are being addressed as needed. On bargaining units, just a brief update, that negotiations are progressing with LASA and LEA on those agreements. And finally, we asked about the Elevate K-12 contract that the board approved at the last meeting. The contract approved by the board for online instructors that are paired with onsite guest teacher is being implemented as needed. The first priority reported was for courses at Lansing Tech, where there's only one section of a course, so it's kind of hard to find a teacher in that content area. So that's good to hear that that's being implemented. And then under new business for the committee, discussion took place on the committee's purpose and scope. Been talking about the specific role of the Personnel Committee, shared several ideas on that, and that's been forwarded for the Policy Committee to consider further. We also continued dialogue about the Personnel Report that the board has traditionally received, which has the listing of resignations, retirements, terminations, and new hires. We have added the demographic information that's been requested before. We're also talking about potentially by the October meeting, having additional graphic that will show for teaching positions, what percentage are under different state certifications, so that we can see how much of our staff is certified and how they're being certified. So we're expecting that possibly to start in October. We'll have another item in our report. And also getting some data on how we can understand the list that we get in relation to the total number of positions in the context of how many changes we're seeing in a particular month. Is that expected for that time of year, and how does it compare to the overall staffing? And then finally, we had a brief discussion about how do we appreciate staff? What discounts, perks? Things could we do to, you know, kind of attract employees? And on that topic, we just talked about the Welcome Back event that was held for staff just prior to the first day for students and how well-received that was. Since the committee meeting, we have received the list that's in the board packet, as was mentioned, of all of the resignations, retirements, terminations, and new hires. It's quite lengthy. Has to be expected for August, when many people make their decisions about the school year, many people leaving the district and many joining the district. But we didn't review that at the committee, so additional questions can come up tonight. And then just recently, we did receive a response on the question that was raised the last time we talked about this, on whether or not the board needs to act on any of those personnel changes. And the report from the attorney provided stated that tenure is granted by statute as long as the requirements of the Teachers' Tenure Act have been satisfied. So board action to grant tenure is not legally necessary. However, we are aware that many boards still continue to do this to give recognition to the teachers earning tenure at the district. So based on that guidance, it would be my recommendation or request, and I think staff as well, to remove the approval of the Personnel Report from the consent agenda and the agenda, and that we instead just recognize people who are receiving tenure as a board as opposed to acting on it. So we'll need to talk about that before we get to the item on the consent agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And I do see Board Policy 3120 is our policy that says that the board shall approve, what does it say? The board shall approve the employment of professional staff. That's where that policy is. So, and then it says shall approve the employment, and then when not covered by the terms of a negotiated or collectively bargained agreement, fix the compensation and establish the term of employment for each professional staff member employed by the board. So I was looking at that. I did see the correspondence related to us not necessarily having to grant tenure. And certainly, we don't need to have an acknowledgement to receive a report. We can just receive the report. There doesn't have to be action to receive a report. But I'm just concerned that until we amend our policy, that I don't want to remove it from the agenda, so we're not actively violating our own policy. But that's just my comment. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments this evening. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Nowitzki. I know that we, as a board and as a district, have been endeavoring to have faculty and staff that more closely matches our student population in terms of race and ethnicity. So I really appreciated that we now have that breakdown, and I did some stats, of course. And I found that the percent of people that we have lost from the district who identify as a racial or ethnic group other than white was 35%, but the percent that we hired, who we've brought on this year, who identify as a racial or ethnic group other than white is 39%. So it's nice to see that we're making strides in that area, and I'm glad that the Personnel Report will now include that information.
Thank you. Any additional questions this evening? Okay. All right. Next report on this evening, we have our Finance Report, which I think you have May, June, and July to discuss with us this evening.
Yes, yes. Thanks for that. Yeah, you'll see that we are covering May, June, and July. That's because the Finance Committee did not meet over the summer until our kickoff meeting for this academic year on August 19th. And so we met August 19th. Dr. Navarro Martinez joined me. And for those interested, our next meeting will be Monday, September 16th. So that's why you see we, during the academic year, we meet monthly, and then during the summer, we take a month or two off. So that's why we're covering three months in the Treasures Report today. The detailed Treasures Report for the period of May 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2024 is attached to this evening's agenda, and the following are the highlights of the report. The beginning cash and investment balance was $61,402,962. Receipts totaled $66,417,122, while disbursements equaled $68,215,778. Net inter-fund transfers totaled $2,481,080 in interest from fund investments to the student and bond funds, as well as journal entries to remove the due-to, due-from in all funds. The transfer to the general fund for bond expenses was $5,115,956. So the ending general fund cash and investments balance on July 30th, 2024 was $62,239,182. The general fund cash and investment balance is $17,949,773, woo, dollars greater as compared to the same time last year, which we love to hear. I also want to highlight some donations that we received. Remember that this is for a three-month period, and so our total is a bit higher than we'd expect for one month. So our donations totaled $10,515.73. We especially want to thank the State of Michigan for their $1,000 donation to the Hispanic-Latino Recognition Ceremony, Centene Management Company and Meridian Health, who donated to Everett football. The Lansing Promise made a few different donations. One of them, I know, covered the meals for the Everett Dance Team's trip to New York City, which was very nice of them. And also, SATSEG donated to the Workers' Comp Safety Grant, over $2,000 in donations there. Additionally, in our 819 meeting, we discussed school-based budgeting. As you know, last year was the first academic year in which the school-based budget model was used, and that conversation was, the gist was that it went well, and that we'll have more definite numbers for the next meeting. So, Madam President, this concludes the May, June, and July 2024 Treasures Report.
Thank you. We do have all three of those reports on our consent agenda this evening, so now is the time to ask any questions if you have them. Not from you, Mr. Strode, in the audience. Any other questions or comments? All right, scene nine. That brings us to our ISOA update. Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, Ingon School Officers Association met, and I am so happy that this afternoon I received a minute for the meeting that I will send all of you, because there are very interesting information. The first one in the agenda was Jennifer Smith from Michigan Association School Board, Director of Government and Relations, and gave us an explanation about the 3% that the staff member had to pay to the state. They were hired before 2012 because it was a deficit in the health program for the teachers. Maybe that is not going to be needed anymore, but we don't know what is going to happen, because the legislator, according with her, didn't meet during the summer, and they probably will meet one time before November. And you know, the fiscal year starts October 1st. The superintendent roundtable, Dr. Adam Spina from Williamstone, is the one who did the presentation. Early college program, due to the fact that the state is now funding community college, but districts will have to pay for the credits for a student to attend the early college with LCC, the program will not be restated at this time. True, and they talk about truancy, and I think the superintendent already talked about that. School safety was a continued discussion during this meeting with the superintendents. And the last one was the state budget. After that, every member that were in attendance, there were about nine of us, talk about their district, and you can read what every district was doing. On my occasion, when it's my time to talk, I said this: Very good graduation ceremonies for all Lansing programs. The board had their retreat and hoped college and had training, the new requirement for the superintendent evaluation. Two buildings remain under construction, Willow and Manhop. The district has a new center to welcome refugees and acclimate them to the area and the district. The board is focused on attendance, continuing increases in graduation rate, and the student number increase. Think I'm going to send to you as a superintendent a minute, and that way we have, you know, what we talked yesterday in the meeting. If there's any question, I will be very happy to answer. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Dr. Rodriguez? All right, scene nine. That moves us on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, oh, our consent agenda this evening includes approval of the August 15th regular meeting minutes, receipt and approval of the Personnel Report, and receipt and approval of the May, June, and July Treasures reporting expenditures as presented. Before we do this, I do need to amend the August 15th regular meeting minutes. Alex? Alex, in the August 15th regular meeting minutes, we need to note that I left the meeting at 7:42, and that means that the vote for adjournment needs to reflect my absence. Apologies for not catching that before. So I will reiterate that the approval, it will be the approval of the August 15th regular meeting minutes as amended.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Nowitzki.
I request that Number 2, the approval of the personnel report, be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. That is off the consent agenda. So the consent agenda this evening will just be the approval of the August 15th regular meeting minutes as amended, and the receipt and approval of the May, June, and July treasures reporting expenditures. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Go ahead.
Well, Ms. Williams.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented with the amendment.
Perfect.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. It's so good to say 9-0. We haven't, ban hasn't been together in a while. All right, it's been a long summer. Glad to see you guys all here. So that motion passes 9-0. We do have the receipt and approval of the personnel report that was removed from the consent agenda. Ms. Nowitzki, do you have questions about it?
Well, just as I mentioned in my report, and in the past, I don't think we need to approve the resignations, retirements, tenure. I think, I appreciate the note of policy on needing to approve new hires. I think we need to look into that further, but so, but for tonight, I would make a motion instead of approving the entire report, of approving just the new hires that are listed in the report.
Mr. Lopez.
Yep. Well, to that point of approving, we could receive the personnel report and not necessarily approve it, but receive it.
We don't have to take actions, just receive a report.
No.
It's just noted as provided as part of the record. The only, and we, I, one of the rabbit holes that I went down was looking at the definition of professional staff and how that's defined, and the MCL really gets into talking about the, it says superintendent and administrator for professional staff, which makes it even more complicated, right? So I don't know, unhelpful because I'm not the attorney, but I also don't want us to actively not follow our own policy. And our policy maybe is inaccurate, and maybe we need to suspend it until we can look into it. That's all possible. But I love the compromise recommendation is that we just approve the new hires as presented, because I think that's the only thing by policy we are held to, is approve the new hires.
So is Policy Committee going to review our policy and come back with a recommendation? All right. I would recommend that they look at the purpose or at the action of receiving, because I think boards receive information, and it just makes it official that we received it. Not necessarily an approval, because they don't make the approval, but we receive. Like finance reports, we receive them, we don't approve them.
We approve the expenditures.
Well, that's another thing. Maybe the Policy Committee should look at that, because all of that is, you know, I think we just need to review all that.
I don't have that policy off the top of my head. I just know that the professional staff one is 3120. I don't have the finance one off the top of my head. But I think that it's fine for us to, it's fine for us to approve the new hires as presented, but I don't have a motion. So if anyone wants to make a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Nowitzki.
I move to approve the list of new hires on the September 5th board personnel report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nowitzki. I'm going to give it to Ms. Moore. Alex, do you have that motion for the minutes? Now that we have a motion on the floor, any additional questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'll just speak to my motion that, I appreciate you, again, you bringing up that policy to comply with, and also say thank you to all the people who have put themselves forward as employees and have joined the district this year. So I look forward to voting in favor and approving the new hires.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Nowitzki, and thanks for getting that background information on the tenure. That was helpful as well. Okay, any additional questions or comments this evening? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes 9-0. That brings us to the next item we actually have on our agenda, which is new business. We need to appoint a new FOIA coordinator. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Alexandra Folsay to be designated as the Lansing School District FOIA coordinator.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Mr. Krim. Can't get rid of us now, Mr. Folsay. Any questions or comments this evening?
So we're going to pile so much on Mr. Folsay that I don't know if he's going to have enough time to do all of this, especially if we're time-consuming.
I will say that one of the benefits is having a single point of contact allows us to have better continuity with the enforcement of the statute, which can be very complicated depending on the record requested. So, and Alex has a very keen eye to detail that will likely keep us out of courtrooms. So, any additional questions or comments?
Madam President, did we give him an option?
No, actually. I'm just kidding.
I just wanted to make sure he had a small option.
I mean, maybe. Yeah. Do you accept Alex? Great, thank you. All right. Any additional questions or comments this evening? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Alex Folsay as our new, Alex, did I say your last name right? Say it.
Fols.
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 Like F-U-L-S.
Fols, like you're fools. The more you know. Alex Fols, thank you so much. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you so much. Next item, we have an item added to the agenda this evening, discussion around board norms, which if board members will recall, we had a board workshop back on April...
April.
Our April retreat.
Our April retreat. And we discussed with our moderator from MASP, a set of board norms that we would hold ourselves accountable to. We've had a couple retreats and meetings and conversations around our expectations as board colleagues, and it was April 20th was the date of that retreat. And so we have a request to discuss board norms this evening. By Ms. Moore, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. And I don't know if we really need to discuss. I really want to just make a motion so we can put it on the floor, unless our other board members have anything to say about our norms and our discussion. I know I brought it up at our June 6th meeting. We talked about it. So at this time, I'm just going to make a motion. I move that, I move that the board accepts our norms that was actually developed or, yeah, developed in April at our retreat.
Second. Okay, so if we are going to say that there's a recommendation to adopt the board norms that were, that were discussed at the retreat, we may want to have something that's actually presented to board members so that we are, again, going back to that, are we in receipt of something that we are taking action on? So I would recommend that we reiterate what those board norms are that we were, that we are discussing.
I don't know if you all have your copy from June, or do you need a copy? If not, I can, you have your copy? The board norms that we did agree upon was to be prepared, challenge ideas but not, but value people, ask questions for better understanding, trust, respect, and assume good intentions. I think, thank you very much, Madam President. You could pass those down. Transparency, and I think, let me reread this because we just have bullets. Excuse me. Here we go. Board norms. We will be prepared. We will challenge ideas but value people. We will ask questions for better understandings. We will trust, respect, and assume good intentions. We will be transparent. We will use data to inform decisions. We will make success, we will make, wait, we will make success of all students our first priority. So those were the norms that we established at our retreat.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Can you tell me about trust, respect, and here I have assumed intentions? I think you add there were good intentions. Assume intentions could be double.
Assume positive intentions. Positive or good intentions, you're correct.
Or no assumed intentions would be better.
You know what happens when you assume. Are there additional? So we have a motion. Did I get a motion?
Yes. Doc, Ms. Williams, Trustee Williams.
Ms. Moore and Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did. And she seconded.
Thank you. Sorry. So we have a motion on the floor to adopt the norms as we discussed at our April 20th meeting. Are there additional discussion that the board would like to have this evening?
The how is going to read? The assumed intention, or how is that going to read?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Nowitzki.
I'm just curious, being new to the board, you know, I'm supportive of the board norms as listed, but then what, what is the implementation for that? Or how do we hold each other accountable to that? Is there a time horizon on this? Just if anybody from past experience can explain more of how this actually operates for us.
It's up to the board to have our own conduct of decorum. So it would be our, I guess it would depend on the context in which we are having the conversation, right? So when we're in a formal meeting, the chair has, the chair of the meeting at that time has the authority to gavel down and maintain order. Other times, we may be together. The expectation is that we, whenever we are gathered together officially doing board business, that we would maintain that same respect for each other. We certainly don't have any particular, we don't have any particular recourse that exists in policy. We have a list of board member ethics, which is in, it's our Board Bylaw 144.2, which is as members of the Board of Education, board members will strive to improve public education, and to that end, list a set of norms. But of course, there's no necessary, necessarily consequence to it. We're accountable to each other, and certainly the electors for all of us. Now, if the board would like to develop formal consequences within our policy, that's also Did that answer your question, Ms. Nowitzki? I'm sorry.
Yes. I mean, it's helpful. I think there are more questions in my mind, but that was helpful.
Sorry. Are there any additional questions or comments? What I would ask is, what we could do is we can get a laminated copy of the board norms that can travel with us, I guess for now, and then they can live at our horseshoe once we're back in our boardroom. I think it's just will serve as a reminder of how we can hold each other accountable.
Madam President.
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Lopez.
Yep. Okay, so I'm having trouble hearing and understanding what you said about trust, respect, and assume positive intentions. I would just like to take the word assume out, because you can assume a lot of good things, and then they don't happen. I think if you just say trust, respect, and positive in something else.
Okay, does anyone support that amendment?
I guess I'd see clarification. So this is to change it to state simply the board agrees to trust and respect positive intentions?
You know, I would, I would just take, just stay with trust and respect.
But I think, Mr. Lopez, in this case, trust and respect are being used as verbs, not nouns. So in order for the sentence to make sense, it would need to be trust, respect, and, and then there has to be another verb before positive intentions.
Trust, respect, and positive intentions. Yeah, I just don't like the word assume.
I think in the assumption, in the word assume, the assumption is every time we have a dialogue that no matter how the relay could seem difficult, but the assumption is to be a positive intent. So let's just say I'm disagreeing with you, but my tone may not appear to be that I'm disagreeing, but we haven't, so the word assume is everything that we're doing is going to be positive, no matter how it's projected per se. That's why that assumption or assume, I guess, that's from the way I read it.
Leave it up to the rest of the board. I said what I was going to say.
Any other questions or comments this evening? All right, I like that we are doing, are setting a set of accountability for ourselves in addition to our board policy around, our board policy around how we govern ourselves. So I think it'll go a long way in building trust and having relationships. And I support having the language of assuming positive intent, as Ms. Williams was stating. It's about how we govern ourselves and look at how we're engaging with each other so that the first thing we need to say to ourselves is, are we responding to ourselves with trust, respect, and assuming positive intent from the dialogue that's happening with our colleagues? So I love that. Are there any additional questions or comments this evening? All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask Mr. Fols to call the roll.
Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Krim.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yeah. Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
I'm assumed that we're okay.
Dr. Navarez Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Nowitzki.
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Willis.
Yes. Great, motion passes 9-0. I'm glad that we were able to do this on our first board meeting back for the school year and have this to help us moving forward. Next item on the agenda is our report from Secretary of Analysis. Dr. Rodriguez, you're back. It's up to you. Look in your blue, nope, nope. Where is it?
You wrote all over it. No, that's not it.
Okay, I think I memorized the whole thing. But the next board meeting will be, the next board meeting will be September, what is today, February?
12.
12, and that will be ISS meeting, informative meeting, and then the regular meeting will be September, September 27. No, excuse me. The regular meeting will be September 26.
You got it.
And then the October 3rd will be also regular board meeting. September 9th, that's very good, very soon, universal pre-school first day. September 27 be the Professional Development Day. This is no school for the students. Students, October 2nd, very, very important day to the parents, to the students, to the teachers, to us. Please come to the school for count day. October 2nd is count day. And you know, this is very, very important day by the parents to school and encourage all the students to be in the school that day. Madam President, complete my requirements.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any questions? Next, we are going to move on to our, our public comment on non agenda items. We do have one registered speaker this evening. I have Andrew Pass here to address the board. Mr. Pass, you can join us right here at the microphone over there. You have three minutes to address the board whenever you're ready.
Hello, my name's Andrew Pass, and I'm the founder of an educational content developing company that partners with schools to develop customized curriculum, including courses and assessment items. And I know it's unusual for someone like me to come to a board meeting and address the board, because it's really the administration that I would work with. But one of the reasons that I come is because Lansing Public Schools is really important to me. And if I had any intention of doing business with the district, then I need to care about the district and show up and learn what's happening. And why am I in this? Why am I doing customized content development? My own son, Michael, is now 29, and thankfully on a really positive trajectory. He's the smartest kid I know, and he really struggled with school. He dropped out of high school, got into drugs, and his life was in the balance far more than I would care to think about. And when he was in high school, before he dropped out, I said, if he was only 10 years younger, because if he was 10 years younger, the curriculum would be so much stronger, and he would engage in it. And now, I wanna help school districts accomplish that objective, catch the Michaels, give them things that are engageable, and make it exciting for them. We've been in business for 15 years. We've been working with publishers and providers. But when you work with publishers and providers with the kind of company that I have, you do what the publishers and providers tell you to. You don't do what the school districts want. And we now use artificial intelligence to gather the input from teachers as to what they want in the courses. So, the teachers are in it. They matter, and we'll make sure that they matter by building off of what they want. So, it's really a win-win, because the students see their own community in it. The students see themselves. Lansing is different than New York City. It's an urban center. But when I was in Michigan State, there was no subway in Lansing, and I still don't think there is. So, the district needs to be represented by what exists on the ground. So, the kids are present, the scholars are present, as are the teachers. And thank you for having me at your board meeting, and it's a pleasure to be here, and I know I have to work with the administration.
Thank you so much. Thank you for introducing yourself. Next on the agenda is comment from board members. Are there any board members that would like to make comment this evening? Ms. Williams?
Ladies first, or you wanna go first, Doc?
Yeah, let me read the norms.
Yes, read.
Ms. Williams, you can go first.
Good evening. And I'm saying, this is my first week at school, 'cause some of us weren't allowed to see our children go to school last week. The two RWs that's sitting here, but we'll get over it. But it was great being in this building this week. I got to see a lot of the kids that were going to Career Tech. They were excited. The joke was, the mommy of the building is back, which actually meant a lot to me, being a parent in this school. Mr. Carruthers, their N W E scores are going up. I think on Tuesday or Wednesday, they were at 88% testing, so congratulations, easy so far. They're doing well. Congratulations to the comm department, even though we're trying to figure out why my stuff still keeps going to spam, but Ryan and I are gonna work on that. So, congratulations as the year's going. I'm liking everything that's happening this year. The newsletters, all the communications, how the parents are coming out more and talking more as they're seeing us in the community. They don't necessarily know that we're board members, but they know that we're parents, and they're excited that we're working for their children and working with their children. So, let's keep the momentum going as board members, but also as parents, because many of us are parents. So, congratulations to all of us, and let's have a good year.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Madam President, I was invited yesterday also to be a representative in the meeting with Representative for Doctor, Secretary of the State, Dr. Miguel Cardona, that today is here in Lansing. And yesterday, he couldn't be there because he was in Wisconsin. With me, I was represented as a board member, all of you and all board members. Over there with us, there were the Michigan Association School Board President, Michigan Association of Principals, Michigan Association Administrators, the PTA of Michigan, also representatives from the governor's office, and two superintendent. Our superintendent, by the way, he did a great job, and the superintendent for Weberly. We talked a lot about money and money and money, and how much money and money and money we need to educate. My, and I was the first one talking, I don't know why, but I was the first one, very because I am older and not to know how to say. And I, my concern was, first of all, to thanks public education, and thanks what we had today in administration in this country. We can't have public education. If we go to another plan or program, probably won't be talking about public education in that way. The second that I emphasized was the professional development for teachers. Preparation, our teacher should be prepared in front of the students, and we need to be sure that we had that, and then how we can promote the vocation or profession of be a teacher. That was my two cents to the whole meeting, and I will continue working with the Dr. Rice and remind them that we need to receive information, that what happened of this meeting. Know that I had a meeting, and after that, we come back to the same, same, same. Then, thank you very much, and I was a person to represent all of you as a board member. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rodriguez, and thank you for that report. Any additional questions or comments from, Ms. Lopez?
Yes, it's more a question than a comment, but, you know, through the years, we've talked about colleges that have teaching schools, MSU Central and others, and we've talked about the, the, the education teachers receive. And we're talking about how can we help those institutions train teachers to serve on urban school districts? Has there been any partnership to look at what they teach and how they teach and what they expect their teachers to know? Go ahead, I'm asking. You more.
Yeah, no, I mean, first of all, I really appreciate the question, because fundamental importance of a school district is to have a collaborative relationship with the institutions that are training our teachers to become teachers. So, with our Grow Your Own grant, we are working with Central Michigan, making sure that we're in touch with their professors as well as their programming. We do not have, I would say, a relationship where we're actually impacting the curriculum that's happening in the classes, but I think that's something that we've kind of highlighted, is how can we possibly have classes that maybe are more about Lansing? But I will say that our relationship with MSU, because they are so close and we have a much stronger relationship now than we did when I got here, we are engaged in, I would say, initial conversations around working with the Graduate School of Education and actually using our schools as a pilot for the work. And, you know, it's very nascent, but I have to give a lot of credit to Dean Jackson of the Graduate School of Education. He and I have been talking extensively around ideas like this. And in fact, just today, I met with two professors who won what's called a triad grant, where they're actually gonna be working with our schools to help increase our, our student achievement. But with that, they'll be working with our teachers as well. And so, some of them will be new teachers, some of them would be student teachers. So, we're trying, you know, as a former professor or recovering professor, as it might be, we do know that they, they're large institutions, and changing curriculum will take time. But I really appreciate you bringing it up, because to work in Lansing, you would wanna make sure that the years they're spent in higher ed are focused on how to work in Lansing. So, I'd say we're, we're starting that, and then our hope is to grow it.
Good to know. And one of the things is that MSU, being the institution of higher learning, you know, our, our promise scholars go there. And so, to other institutions like Olivet, and so, it's important that we make those connections and try to impact in that form. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Sure thing. Mr. Nowitzki.
Yes, I just wanted to share that I was fortunate enough to go to the Kinship Awareness Summit yesterday that was put on by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and learned for the first time that September is National Kinship Awareness Month. So, there are many families out there. Kinship care is defined as full-time care of nurturing and protection of children by relatives, members of their tribes or clans, godparents, stepparents, or any adult who has a kinship bond with a child. And that's a relatively new and more broad definition than it has been in the past. So, a number of our students, I'm sure, are in these situations, where they don't fall under traditional foster care or biological or adoptive families. And often, these families struggle finding resources. That was kind of a highlight of the conference. But there are many available, many more than have been in the past. I know the district makes many efforts through the Office of School Culture to reach these families, but we have to know about them and enable to help them get access to that. So, anybody listening to staff and students, help us know what your situation is, so that we can get you connected for many things, like housing and finances and food and clothing. The department really wanted to stress how much more is now available to kinship families, even outside of the traditional systems. And there was a great keynote speaker who talked about his own challenges in his life and focused on the importance of connections and belonging for all humans, and how his own story, it was his school that saved him from the abusive situations he was in. And he ended up finishing his last two years of high school, living with a coach in a kinship relationship, and that allowed him to play college football and go to the NFL and become a dynamic speaker now. So, it was encouraging to hear and just wanted to uplift that for the district and the community to highlight those families who are in that situation and to let them know there is support and resources available.
Madam President, I do have a question. We talked some time ago about mandatory reporting training for everyone by 11/20/2024. Has there been any movement on that?
Can you give me some more context?
So, it was mentioned back in May, and it may be a question for Sergio, that any W-2 employee in the district by 11/2024 would have to be, go through mandatory training. There would be modules available. Have we heard, has there been any movement or anything on that?
I don't know, but can I, if, Mr. Kekav, you're not prepared to answer that question today, it's okay, we can take it back.
I can take the question after.
Okay, thank you. I know that there's statutory requirements for who is obligated as a mandated reporter, and then I don't know if we had additional school code requirements. Okay, any additional questions? Now, Dr. Navas Martinez.
Yeah, I also wanted to bring up an awareness thing. September's also National Suicide Prevention Month, and I just wanted to, you know, put it out there that we have a crisis, specifically men in our society are in crisis in terms of suicide rates, and that if we have anybody, you know, in our district, teachers, students, anyone who's struggling, you know, we have resources. You can call 988, and there's always someone willing to help, and you're not alone. Thank you.
It's okay to say. Isn't that one of the taglines we have out right now? Okay. Any additional comments from board members? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education adjourn.
Great. It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. At 7:25, we are adjourned. Thank you.